I agree with them.
Yeah, I put it off as long as I could, so today I had to take the tiller off the tractor and get the bush hog on there. It's just.
You were way behind.
Way, way behind.
Good God, Cardi, that's easy stuff.
You know, switching equipment.
Oh, it's misery. Oh, it's misery. The rest of us all, damn, we all hate it.
That's why you buy another tractor.
Yeah, that's exactly right. The tanners, they got one hooked up to everything. Just keep on going. They don't have to stop.
No, we all like, know about that. Saturday, I broke an axle on a truck, so I switched and put on an old feed cart and all that. What are you gonna do?
Same thing, just hit farm, farm and get up, get moving.
It's the inner, it's the inner drop, like the full axle, there's an inner drive that's like this. It broke in half.
It's awesome. I, I know, I know. Yeah, I, I planned to, yes.
What's that?
Alan's right there.
Oh, yeah.
This conference will now be recorded.
Did it? Great. No, no. Y'all ready down there? Ready? All right, let's call board supervisor meeting to order as always. Let's start with pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We do have a forum. We do need to adopt an agenda. Anybody have anything we need to add to the agenda this afternoon, weekly?
Staff does not, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody? What'd y'all like to do?
I'm in to adopt the agenda.
Second. Motion is made in second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signal five percent. Aye.
Aye.
Please sign. As always, public comment. Public comment. Anybody? A lot of people online? No, no, it's shocking. Do want to wish Alan a happy birthday. Congratulations on becoming an adult. Comes in to celebrate with Board Supervisors Meeting. Things should be better in eighteen. All right, no public comment. We'll do that again here shortly. Constitutional officers, county departments, committees and organizations. Jim, good to see you. Ms. Warren?
Good afternoon. Just a couple of things to report from finance. Currently, we are right in the middle of our HR and payroll implementation with Tyler Munis. Everything's going well. We had a really good demo presentation with some of the department heads on the upcoming time and attendance module, as well as advanced scheduling, which is a module of Tyler, which will help our, some of our departments with the scheduling aspect. For instance, EMS and Sheriff's Department. The timeline for implementation of both is still on target to go live on January first. The audit work begins the week of October the second and working again with Mary Earhardt and her team. And that's for the FY twenty-three audit. And then we're just making some process changes in finance to help streamline, streamline some of our processes with Bank of America and Amazon. And I'll take any questions that you have.
What was the date on Tyler going live?
January first. Tyler's already live, financials is live, but this, the second and third module will be January first.
So post-January first, how much more training and implementation do we have?
From our perspective, the only thing is phase three, which is in parallel with HR payroll. And after January one, go live, as long as we get, as long as we get phase three also done at the same time, there won't be any additional implementations.
Be a big step.
Yes. Everything that we need Tyler for will be up and running.
Great. Anybody have questions for Ms. Warren? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, welcome EMS. Who is, who is speaking? Noah, are you speaking?
Alrighty, so good evening. July was busy, hundred and ninety-two calls, ten minutes average response time. You'll see additional response info. We're starting to track unit availability within the county. From zero seven hundred to sixteen fifty-nine, there were ninety-nine calls in the month of July. What really stood out to us is between five o'clock and seven o'clock, there were thirty. So we saw a large uptick there. And then sixty-three calls for the remaining hours. We then broke it down over thirty-one days. There's seven hundred and forty-four hours. And for the month of July, there were thirteen point eight-eight hours where all of our units were deployed. And then the specific days and times are below for your reference. Lots of mutual aid, eight to green, we were able to answer four, one to orange, we answered one there. And then we had two mutual aid requests. We requested to help cover calls here in Madison. Personnel, we're still down four. I received approval today to make offers for two paramedics, which I'll do. We're still actively recruiting for the other positions. And Dr. Brady has been our medical director for over seventeen years, received a promotion at UVA as a ER director. So he submitted his resignation and we're working closely with Dr. Matthew Rains from Culpeper Hospital, working through the contract and so forth. My goal is to have a proposal contract for your review at the August twenty-second meeting and a go-live transition September first. But so far, things are moving steadily. Standby events, we did the tractor pull and then the Madison County Fair, which went well. And today, tomorrow, we will place an ambulance order. We have some language in the contract that needed to get adjusted, but that's been finalized. Any questions?
Questions for Noah? Congratulations on the getting a new ambulance that getting going, moving right along, you know, and then Dr. Brady, he serves, he's a, is he just essentially a contract employee?
Yes.
All right.
Good news with the new medical director, Probono, so he's doing good.
Really? Oh, terrific.
We're just, Ms. Chain, we're just working in. I want to recognize Handon's work. He's reviewed the ambulance agreements that are contract, that's what got us to final, as well as Noah's assistance, but as well is vetting the OMD agreement. We haven't had much change in years. We're thankful. I think Dr. Brady was from oh-five to present. So as Noah stated, we'll have that ready on August twenty-second. I believe it needs, state EMS has it right now, correct, the OMD agreement?
Correct. I've briefed Handon. It's with OMS right now to make sure that we've met all their criteria. Then Handon will review it for final and then we'll have it for the twenty-second.
When does Dr. Brady actually stop being our medical director? There's gotta be some type of overlap time, isn't there?
Yeah, so his resignation is effective August thirty-first. Within that, he has offered, if we didn't have a replacement, to remain on. On the thirty-first is last.
So we'll have something maybe by then, or at some point when we have a thank you, we like to have the board formally recognize and maybe Noah could present or the chair, whoever decides, but I think that would be definitely suitable. There is some crossover as well, I learned, because there are EMS or protocol things that touch emergency communication, so we're also getting another department that's being serviced through this OMD agreement.
Noah, thank you.
Thank you.
Gavin?
Good evening, everyone. Just a few things on the update for this month. The shelter upgrade, we're still in the process on that. We did have another follow-up meeting with the engineer. As you can see in the report, he came back with a little bit higher price, about fifty thousand dollars more than what we had anticipated. Mainly due to the, the location itself of where the generator has to go and how they have to run the wiring. I'm sure Supervisor Dawson can testify to the fact that copper's expensive, so that's really what it comes up to is with the wiring. What we're looking at now is going with a slightly smaller generator to cover the main HVAC that we'll need for the corridor that we need to provide the shelter space. And he thinks he could do that and stay within the original hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. By doing that, if he can work all those numbers and make that happen, then I'll go back to the grant administrator for VDM and get approval on that and sign offs. And then we can start moving forward from there. So that's kind of where we're at. Hope to have something in the next week or so. He said he'd have something in about two weeks, so we're about a week into that now. SHSP grant, we have submitted both grants. They're in there. Everything has gone out to the peer reviewers and the subject matter expert reviewers. All those have to be backed by August eighteenth, and then we anticipate hearing something around October timeframe on the SHSP. As far as upcoming opportunities, we have the Touch a Truck event again this year. It's a different timeframe. We did have to change it to September thirtieth due to some scheduling issues with some of the volunteers that'll be playing victims and helping us out with the entire event. But it looks to be a really good event again this year. We have Air Care has committed to coming in from Culpeper again. We've got EMS and Fire and Sheriff's Department all will be participating along with the Free Clinic who's kind of coordinating everything, so we're looking forward to that. And then the only thing I have that's upcoming that I don't have on here, be working with EMS and Chief Hamm to get the motocross, which is coming up on the nineteenth and twentieth up at Graves Mountain again, so. And that's the hair scramble that they call that, so that should be pretty well attended again. You know, any questions?
Questions, please.
But Gavin, where is the Touch a Truck event held?
That'll be at the Young Farmers Field, where we have the fair.
Thank you.
So the hair scramble is the nineteenth and twentieth of this month?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other question?
Thank you, Gavin.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Brian? Well, yeah, I don't, take the microphone with you. Good gosh, I don't. Yeah, well, that's good for you. All right, go ahead.
She catches him for the minutes.
I gotta try to keep with those guys all day. I might as well do it here.
Correct.
So, yeah, pretty, pretty static month for us as far as numbers went. Home phones received on nine one one is a hundred and seventy-nine, wireless four hundred and sixty-four. Administrative calls taken right at twenty-three hundred, and it made thirteen hundred and forty-three. Total call volume in through the center is four thousand two hundred and ninety-five. Relative to the same time period last, last year is a hundred and four percent. But for the same seven-month period, we're at ninety-six percent. Calls for service, we're looking at right around twelve hundred and eleven calls for last month, year-to-date, seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-six. That's a hundred and one percent of last year's volume. The thing to remember there, we're still way below what pre-COVID numbers look like. So other than that, radio system, we're very, very busy at Churchill right now. Geotech has been done. I've not gotten a report back on it, but there was no rock around the hole, which is a very good sign. Geological survey was done. If you really dig pits and look for arrowheads and things like that, no report back on that yet either. They're doing the spectrum fingerprinting right now up there. So that's looking for radio waves, anything that will cause interference with our system. Don't anticipate anything. There's not much up there to generate radio waves. Churchill's the last site that needs to be done on that. We anticipate moving through this process, which is red tape right now, hopefully to start construction sometime in September. We had a construction walk up there last Thursday, a few speed bumps that I ironed out. I don't think we'll have a problem there moving forward. The contractors or the engineer actually moved the site about two hundred yards from where we wanted it, trying to keep up with our ordinance, not knowing that we had a fall pack already in place. So they now know that. They're gonna go back to the draw table and get that where it needs to be.
As of this Friday, I am short.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Yeah, no doubt. Two hundred yards is substantial.
It was substantial. And what it was gonna mean is we would have to cut into a bank and a lot more grading involved and, quite frankly, a lot less elevation.
All right.
And retaining wall was gonna be required for it.
Good. So you straightened them out back to where we were supposed to be. That's the way to be. All right, keep going.
So as of Friday, I am short one staff member. Once again, I've had another one resign due to family issues. She's having to move back away from the area. I still have one in training and I attended the demolition derby as a, as assist to the sheriff's office. Other than that, happy to answer any question.
They have anything for Brian? Thank you. Livingston?
Having a bit of a camera issue, so if we can all use that side.
That's your report? Ah, good.
You got it up there. This is how this works. All right, so Laserfish, we're done with all the training on Laserfish.
Good.
That was completed today. Now what we have to do next with Laserfish, I hate to say it, is we've got to regroup, get together and see how we're going to use it and how we're gonna use it best. I think that because of the.
Group problem.
The change of the project manager type things, that when it first conceived, we were, we were pretty sure what we were gonna be doing with it, but it's not gonna work like that. It's, it's got a lot of stuff to it, the contract. It's gonna take a lot of time for me and Alan to do a bunch of admin work on it, to build these search fields and filters and things for the different applications. So I think what we do is we roll it out, we give it time, watch it for a little while, let people, Stephanie's group, Brian, Brian Daniels' group and Jamie, because Jamie's familiar with it, they're gonna start using it as is. But it's, it is what it is. They're, they're not, there's not a whole lot of admin support comes with it, so. But good news is, all training's done. We're gonna figure out, get together and start using it now. Any questions you got on that particular?
Yeah, against my best judgment. What do you think we're gonna use Laserfish for?
Well, when I, when it first was mentioned back in the day.
Yeah.
I thought that it was gonna be for everybody to take their filing cabinets and start scanning them.
It's the impression we all got.
Yeah, document management.
So we could go digital on that, and we still can do that. But it's got so many more intricacies in it to where, say you have a document that you fill out for your department, and they have a document that they fill out for their department. We have to create these filters to go into the men, to the metadata and actually set up the search, set up the way that it does what it does best. I mean, you might have a document, I was talking to Brian earlier, or Jamie, where somebody thirty years from now don't own the same house that they had thirty years ago. It'll go out and it'll look up everything about that and all the documentation, but you have to actually tell it how to look and what fields, and you have to prepare the documentation for that. Which is gonna be a nice, it's gonna be work for me and Alan.
All right.
So we gotta balance that with everything else that we're trying to get done and do. Honestly, I'm not very, not very happy with the, the training and the stuff that went on there, but I came into the tailor.
That's the way.
So, we pay for it, we're gonna make it work, but honestly, I'm, I'm not seeing it. It wasn't done right.
Nah, your brutal honesty we take. Um, that's okay.
I'll just add to that, Mr. Chairman, kind of just to summarize that, Bruce will be getting with some offices. We'll talk about maybe how they would use it to determine the level of effort that IT will have to take. Jamie is the only one on payroll who's actually used this in another locality. He has asked for it, so we demonstrate it, how he would use it, and then we'll make the best decision from there. If it's something where it seems to be counterproductive or whatever it may be, we'll bring that information back. I'm not suggesting we, in service or whatever at this time, I want to evaluate what we paid for. In all fairness to the group here today, it's digging into that. I always use the example, if there were three levels of services, which level did, did we purchase? So I believe we're still working through it and we'll come back when we have that determined of how it will be used, primarily from the treasurer and commissioner's function in building the zoning. It was initially geared to finance as well. I've told Laserfish no. Jennifer and her team are well inundated with many day-to-day routines, let alone Tyler Phase Two. They've had successful rollout of that and we don't need a roadblock there. So we'll be in somewhat of a regrouping phase, but we'll have more to report at a future date.
And I do have a meeting next week with the two project owners of our project for Laserfish, and I'm gonna pose to them the questions you asked me about. Okay, if we don't have time to do these filter things, maybe you guys can help us. You have some other level of support. And then take it through. It's evidently a great product. My goal, I want to try to learn more about it every day. But the training is not the problem anymore. It's just gonna be us figuring it out, rolling it out. And we're gonna start, we can use it. We're gonna start using it. But we're, as far as setting it up and configuring it, we're gonna have to do a lot of that.
Your enthusiasm is contagious. What else are you doing?
I love beating. We have scheduled, I've, I haven't quite scheduled yet, but I've got the people setting up the next round of PIN testing. And that's gonna happen very soon. So we, we started to go out and start cleaning up some of the ones from the October testing that we've seen, but we decided to just let it run like it is so that we get a fresh copy of everything out there that we see as a potential. It's basically a simulated attack on our network. And the last time we passed it, we, we got through it fine. But there was some things identified. We're gonna do it again now. As far as that, I expect it in the next few weeks. We should start that. We'll let everybody know what's going on with that. Fiber, we're just waiting on AMS to give us, send us Matt. There's attack people down here. Everything's done with our AC. All the thing Brady works done. We're close.
Good.
To have a fight. Jennifer said most of what we needed to say about Tyler Munis. Working with some of their techs right now. They're having some problems keeping a stable VPN while they're working on there, but I don't think it's anything with us. I'm just helping them figure out what's going on over there, failing on their end. That's right. Alan, as far as I know, all the Vita stuff was worked out with the website. It turned out that it was a configuration change that needed to be made on our network. So once we isolated that, we made that change and we're up and running on the website. Much more stuff going on.
Who has questions for Livingston? Anything? Thank you, Livingston. Yes, sir. Ryan Daniels?
Good afternoon. Pretty much just business as usual in our office, making our last push for personal property, business tangible property, getting that wrapped up so that we certify the book for September one. Other than that, it's, like I said, we're just chugging along. Kind of on standby with the Laserfish.
You're excited.
Monitoring, yes.
That's the way to be.
Extremely excited.
Good. All right, who else? You got other stuff?
Working with, uh, Avenity, of course you're familiar with Avenity, working with them to clean up a few things that may kind of automate and allow us to do other things based on data and that sort of thing. based on data and that sort of thing. It's just taking some time to build out that, those rules to put into place so that the system can, can install it or, or properly handle the data.
Questions for Bronn? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Alright, Tracy?
I'm in full Taste the Mountains mode. Uh, still having people contact me. Some people haven't made their decisions yet. Um, Kite's hands for one, may not participate because they need help. Um, they're still hiring. Don't know about Miranda's. Don't know if she's gonna be open or not by then. I thought it was gonna be Father's Day, then end of July. We'll see what happens there. Um, Emmy Lou's sign looks great at Madison Plaza, if you haven't seen that, and lots of interest in her current location too, so that's good. And Three Springs Farm's gonna be having their grand opening at the old Arroda store on August nineteenth. So that'll be good too for everybody. Shannon Doss' arrivals ribbon cutting, uh, we already had that. They're actually having classes, and I keep meaning to ask if he's coordinating any of that? Probably not, okay. I might mention to him, he may even wanna coordinate those things, cause he's doing CPR and things like that as well.
He's the fire department, seemed good was out there.
Okay, good. Um, I went to the town council meeting on August third, and if they get their CBDG grant, I agree to be on their uh, project management committee along with Mr. Dawson, I believe. So we'll see what hap- I think they find out on the fifteenth if they get the grant.
Good. How much and what for?
Uh, it's a planning grant for sixty thousand dollars.
Oh.
And they may not get the sixty thousand dollars, but it wasn't-
And just, my, what brief meeting I had with the town clerk was, they wanna look at things. The planner would essentially come to town, walk to town, meet with town officials, and talk about things, whether it's beautification with sidewalks, power lines, just in general, try to give them more of a comprehensive, not a comprehensive plan like you're working through, but what's the vision, what's some improvements, and this person would put that on paper in order to give them kind of a roadmap to move forward.
It sounds like still sidewalks.
And still sitting on the thirty thousand dollars that we already gave them from the revolving loan fund that was supposed to be the sidewalk.
Yeah, but the sidewalks, didn't they come in at like two point seven million or something for about a hundred and fifty feet worth of sidewalks? Yes. Yeah, I'm telling you, you'd be a bulldozer. Um, alright.
Yeah, okay. Uh, next food council meeting will be on Office Work Team with the Regional Commission, and as I reported last time, we're kinda merging between Rivers along with purely Piedmont. Our tourism group, regional tourism groups, doing the event planning workshop on September twentieth. Um, I'm attending the Vito Fall Conference, September twentieth. Uh, our Realtors Round Table will be September twenty seventh, following the SES meetings. Uh, Governor Summit, A World Prosperity in October, the State Tourism Summit in November. Uh, we updated the Barnfeld Trail, and I'm getting lots of inquiries about that, so thanks to me and Cogage and Laura. And I did submit the, um, Creator Piedmont Realtors' June twenty twenty-three report. One thing that happened right after I sent my report through, the governor reported that we are back to pre-COVID tourism numbers, traveler spending. So we'll find out, um, probably in September, what our twenty twenty-two numbers were. And just to report on a day at the visitor center, and sometimes it's quality over quantity, had a gentleman come in and said he's just from Culpeper, just looking around. I'm like, okay, let me know if you have any questions. And he said, actually, we're having a rally. And I pivoted, said, what kinda rally? And he goes, no, we're bringing twenty-five Airstreams to Madison Vines with all their families, and we're spending four days here.
Hmm, good.
So, he left with twenty-five canvas bags, pens, brochures, and my card.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Did you have a good time at Madison Vines, Gavin? There you go.
That's all I have right now.
Questions for Tracy? Anything new at Taste of the Mountains or?
There's some new things at Taste. I'm placing these people now. Yeah, there's some new crafters.
Alright, alright, good.
No penny rides, but there's still sand art.
Yeah, sand art, that's the one.
I wanted to ask her, Mr. Chairman, what's the new, the Chamber page had some kinda looked like a new product that Revelations was offering?
Oh, the ver juice, it's a non-alcoholic ver juice. It's really good. They make, they do salad dressings with it, and they make drinks with it as well.
You said it was shampoo, Jonathan.
It looked like it was in a shampoo bottle.
It's a new bottle. I'm sure it's environmentally friendly.
But it's, it's, it's like salad dressing and-
Or drinks, or cock, mocktails, no alcohol.
So not shampoo, packaged similar, but, okay.
So my tagline on that, by the way, thank you very much, was, people don't like to go to wineries cause they don't drink. I'm like, you can go to wineries, there are drinks that you can have that are non-alcoholic, but the views are still intoxicating.
Very good, that's very good. Uh, excellent. Anybody have any questions for Tracy? Thank you, Tracy. Alright, I think we've done all of this. Um, alright, let's move on. We've got consent agenda. We've got minutes from uh, seven eleven twenty twenty-three. Um, what would y'all like to do with the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion made in second. Further discussion? Here in an all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Put a same sign. Um, alright, we do have some special appearances. Helen, uh, with Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development. And Ms. Delaney, welcome. Livingston, you gotta turn this thing down. I feel like I'm yelling at myself. It's a real problem. Please.
Oh, that's right, alright. Good evening. Helen Coffin, President of Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development. Uh, good to see you all again, and thanks for having me tonight. You have a ton of slides in your packet. I will tell you, I'm going through them quickly and at a high level. I just wanted to provide you with plenty of information. If anyone wanted it, they could delve deeper and, and come back to us with questions later. So first slide. So why economic development? I always like to start with this. It's really about jobs. We focus on higher-paying jobs in target sectors that also offer career ladder opportunities. And the new capital investment, which as you know, those tax revenues help you do all the things that your folks were reporting on today. And also focusing on the fact that revenues generated by business really help ease the burden on the homeowners who typically complain about taxes if they go up. Next slide. We also like to mention why we're in existence, regionalism. There are eighteen, uh, regional groups in Virginia, and we are one of those with eight counties and city of Charlottesville. And it's really because businesses tend to look at regions first rather than specific jurisdictions. Even if you're in Madison County and trying to grow, you may have to look at a neighboring county or the appropriate site or building. But we also wanna be sure that we keep focused on what you all want in your individuality. So we should focus on that as well as the regional keys. Next slide. We've been around since nineteen ninety-five. We're a public-private partnership, uh, separate not-for-profit uh, with, in collaboration of government, business, and education. You can see the counties we cover. I think y'all are pretty familiar with that. Next slide. Our leadership includes Jonathan Weekly, who's on our Board of Directors, and we greatly appreciate his service. Case Locky, uh, the Director of Economic Development at University of Virginia is our current chair. And Tracy serves on our Economic Development Partners Group, which meets monthly, and she's a very active contributing member. Next slide. Investors, this list gives, gives you a feel for who's currently involved with us. About sixty-five companies. Germanic Community College, Piedmont Virginia Community College, UVA, and of course, the public sector, the local governments. Next slide. I always like to put this in because again, economic development is a long-term process. It's a team sport. It takes all of those things and many more working together to ensure that your local businesses continue to be successful. Next slide. Also under our umbrella, we are the support organization for Go Virginia Region Nine. And as of July first, Virginia Career Works Piedmont Region became a standalone organization, also called Virginia Career Works. We're very excited and look forward to their future success. I wanna give you a feel for our three main strategies, uh, here, and then I'll turn the program over to Katie. Uh, our first is really build national identity as Central Virginia is a great location for business. This really has to do with promoting and supporting your existing business, retaining and expanding them in Madison County, and also in attracting and recruiting businesses in target sectors. Not any kinda business in the world, but very specific ones. Our target inter- industries are shown on the slide. Uh, you all, of course, your target industries, when we did this study a few years ago, was agribusiness, business and financial services, and then also one that really captures the tourism and hospitality piece because that's so prevalent here. Next slide. We all have a website, centralvirginia.org. Uh, Tracy helps us make sure your fact sheet and your information reflects what you want it to, and always updating that with the latest facts and figures. In fact, new information, the quarter one just came out, and Candace Spence in our office is already updating that on our website. You can see on the top right, we have a Bold Ventures Begin Here brochure, and a wonderful picture of Bald Top, which is hard to see on this slide, but it's a really nice picture that Tracy found for us. So you all are represented in that as well. Next slide. In fiscal year twenty twenty-three, seven announcements, four hundred and thirty-seven new jobs, and a hundred and thirty-five million in new capital investments. Uh, Madison County didn't have a project this year, but last year may remember that we helped with Hidden Pine. So excited about that. Hopefully, they're doing well. Next strategy is really about regionalism. The main thing we're doing here is Go Virginia, supporting that, as well as developing, uh, sites. So one of the things we have lacked and, and all of our counties are struggling with is having sites for businesses to remain and grow here and attract them as you'd like. The next slide shows, um, that Go Virginia nines, um, a- areas that they fund in the targeted industries, and Madison County has received money from Go Virginia for crafting a new normal and crafter hiring paying jobs. And on the next slide, you all participated in our site project that was solely funded by the partnership. Uh, South Park Center was part of that project. So again, you're getting some of our site work as well. We're looking at doing the next site project and talking to Tracy about what might be involved there. We have a current Go Virginia project, almost eight hundred thousand dollars for Culpeper and Louisa County to do site development. Uh, our biggest opportunity right now is really that Shannon Hill Regional Business Park. That's at Shannon Hill Intersection on sixty-four, seven hundred acres. That's gonna be a, once it's ready to market, that's gonna be a nice opportunity for us. Next slide. Our third strategy is about attracting, retaining, and aligning talent. And uh, I wanna introduce our new talent director. Um, some of you may remember, I was here last year about this time, talking about our new initiative. And uh, we have a new talent director, and I wanted to turn it over to her to finish up this presentation, Katie Delaney.
Thank you, Helen, and hi. I'm Katie Delaney. Happy to be with you all today. So I'm gonna just talk through Strategy Three, um, on this talent, several talent initiatives that, uh, the partnership has launched. So the next slide will highlight what those are. The first two are really talent attraction pieces, just to make sure, um, all of our localities have the talent they need to fill the jobs that you have. And the third, um, Tech Link, which I'll talk about, is a talent retention initiative. So starting off with livingcentralva.org, yeah, on the next slide, thank you. This is a, um, website we've launched that really showcases why Central Virginia is a great place to live, work, and play. And each of our localities has a page, so here's Madison County's. There's multimedia on the website, um, including interviews with business leaders to get a feel for some of these companies. Um, under the work tab, we've highlighted each of the sectors that Helen has named, um, and linked businesses throughout the region that fit into those sectors. So if anyone clicks on the, um, job, or sorry, the business logos, it will go to the business's hiring page to, to help showcase those job openings. Um, on the next slide, you'll see, uh, Liveability, Central Virginia Magazine. We saw those outside. I know that, um, Helen, I think, brought these last year when she was here. Um, and so we have had the first issue, which, uh, came out last year, and these are some snippets from that, features from that. Back on the farm is an agri-business piece that, um, showcases your Bald Top Brewing as well as Early Mountain Vineyards. Um, we're expecting our second issue out later this year, and appreciate Madison County's support and, and the publication both times. Um, the nice thing about this as a talent attraction piece is we also have a digital, uh, format. So businesses can email this or send the link to folks that they might be recruiting or telling about their businesses. And you can find that digital copy on our livingcentralva.org website that was on the last slide. So next slide, um, just to spend a couple of minutes talking about Tech Link. So this is our, um, newest grant that, this is funded by Go Virginia Region Nine, and, um, we are about to finish up our first year and kick off our second year. Tech Link exists to fill entry-level tech job openings all throughout the region. These are our four targeted sectors. I've been, had the fortune of working with a team of student interns at UVA, PBCC, and Germana, um, who have really helped connect to their student bodies all, uh, throughout their campuses to talk about, um, Tech Link and help identify these job openings that we've been able to identify. Um, so, on the next slide. Tech Link has strategies to engage with both students and businesses, since we're really trying to connect the two. We release a student newsletter every Monday during the school year, so we're excited to get back to that in a couple short weeks. Uh, when UVA starts their semester back, we'll begin releasing those. I have one-on-one meetings with students regularly to talk about their job searches. Um, and we also are regularly planning and supporting networking events. Last April, we, um, sponsored and planned two networking events that brought together over fifty businesses and over three hundred students to network and talk about, um, jobs. One of those was in partnership with CBIC, Charlottesville Business Innovation Council, and the other was in partnership with TomTom, supporting a career fair that they had there. So that was exciting. Um, our, on the next slide, showcase some strategies for engaging businesses. Similarly, we always invite businesses to be featured in the newsletter and really enjoy co-writing spotlights, um, to make sure businesses are having the message they want in front of students. Um, I often am having one-on-one meetings with businesses as well, just to understand hiring needs so that when I talk with students, I can highlight those. And, um, inviting businesses to networking events. One, just to make sure is on everybody's radar, is at the end of this month, August twenty-ninth. UVA is kicking off their recruiting season with an event called Tech Night Takeover. Um, and the partnership is sponsoring tables because we really wanna make sure there's regional presence, and we have, uh, companies here from Central Virginia at the event. We still have some spaces, so if there are any businesses in Madison County that would like to attend, over four hundred students come through, and it's really a big event, um, please email me, and I would love to talk through next steps with you to get you registered. One of our biggest takeaways, um, that we try to share with businesses is that if you want to recruit UVA students, you really need to make sure your positions are on Handshake. It's the biggest tool that they all look at for jobs. Um, so we're regularly trying to spread that message. Um, on the next slide. If you know of jobs, or sorry, businesses in Madison, say they have an entry-level job opening and want to connect with Tech Link students, um, again, encourage that business to post on Handshake, and then it's really helpful to me if, um, and I invite them to email the job posting to me directly so that I can help promote that through the channels that Tech Link has. So our newsletter, social media, and as I meet with students one-on-one, be sure to, to mention that job. If there are companies on the next slide that don't have entry-level jobs right now, but just wanna increase the visibility of, of their company, also feel free to reach out. Um, I would love to showcase them in the newsletter, um, brainstorm lunch and learn events, um, or even students touring their facility, and of course, um, always promoting them on social media. I'll just end by mentioning that, um, we do collaborate with two other grants that have internships. Um, one of those is based out of UVA, and one is Virginia Career Works Piedmont that Helen mentioned. Um, so we really run the gamut from high school internships all the way to entry-level tech jobs. Um, and if it's helpful to, to ever connect with folks who are, um, working on these internship grants, please reach out, cause I would love to put you in touch with them. I'm happy to answer any questions, cause I know Helen is as well, if anybody has any.
Alright, questions for Ms. Delaney or Helen? Please.
Ms. Delaney, you've alluded to this somewhat, but how do the public school systems fit into this program with regard to workforce development?
So the Talent Supply Connector is, is more focused on the K through twelve piece. Um, Tech Link is specifically focused on students that are getting ready to graduate college. Um, so they are, I know Virginia Career Works Piedmont is focusing right now on, um, some curriculum that they're partnering with CTE, uh, teachers to, to help underscore some of this career prep in the K through twelve schools. And I'm happy to connect you with our team at, colleagues at Virginia Career Works, if you wanna hear more about that. They're up to some good work there.
Okay, is there any, any financial support or grants or programs that come through your organization to help supplement CTE instructors in the school systems? Cause that is a big issue.
Oh, yeah, so, um, we just now, through the state, there is, um, matching funds now for internships for businesses that qualify. Again, this is- Again, this is, this is like through the internship collaborative. My colleague Maeve could talk to you more about this. But for businesses that want to have interns, if they meet a certain number of qualifications, then they can go through a training program and receive matching funds in order to pay their interns. So that helps with the cost of making that affordable, so students have that on-the-job experience. But yeah, other than that, I would say connecting with these other two grants would probably be the closest for K through 12. I'm sorry, I can't speak further on the topic.
That's fine, thank you. I would like to contact this person.
Okay, yes, I would love to put you in touch with them.
Thank you.
All right, who else has questions or comments? Anything down here?
No sir.
Anybody? Patrick, you have anything to add to this? Thank you both.
Thank you for your time.
Hi Helen. All right, VDOT Quarterly Report. Ms. Shepherd, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Next slide, I'm Carrie Shepherd, I'm the VDOT Resident Engineer for the Charlottesville Residency, here to provide the Quarterly Report. So to start off, we'll start with our preliminary engineering. It's very small. So our Cut at Shelby, that is continuing to move forward. Last milestone was right-of-way, next is the PAC, which is the advertisement conference. Advertisement is set for November of this year. Then the sidewalk in the town of Mabson, that's currently, I think, trying to decide if that's viable. I have not heard yet back from the town. If it is, ad date is scheduled right now at the winter of 2027, so it could be years out. 707 Pine Hill Road Bridge, that is also, the next milestone is pre-advertising conference and we expect the ad date to be January of 2025. And then last but not least, a little bit out is also 749 Moon Road Bridge Replacement over the Hughes River. Next milestone is scoping, so it's in the very early stages and it is expected to be May of 2025. And then for our rural rustic roads, we have Desert Road Phase One and Two. They are currently under construction and almost complete. As far as our construction activities, we have completed the sidewalk repair at the Guerilla Elementary School. And we have one bridge project ongoing right now and that's on 707 as well. It's Nethers Road Bridge Replacement. It's scheduled to be completed about mid-October. And then as far as traffic engineering, we were requested to provide an analysis of 621 Beautiful Run Road Speed Study. And we did not do the speed study, we found out it was not warranted. But we did fix some missing signage that was, that we had found. And that concludes the formal presentation. So if there's anything else to discuss or comment?
Yeah, we've got some of those. You want to start?
Yes, I guess the main one, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Ms. Shepherd and I had some conversation as of recent, but really need your direction. Turner Drive, that's one that the citizens or a good portion of them on that road has engaged the county of VDOT earlier on, I want to say probably going back to last year. As you recall, half of that road, I'm saying half, I'm not using mile markers, but was placed into your six-year plan last year, so I think it's been about a year. The remaining doesn't currently qualify for being put into the six-year secondary road plan because of WIF and other challenges. It's my understanding from the board that in order to kind of understand if you want to take on, if you will, that road or approve that as an upcoming project, you would need construction estimates on that. In order for VDOT to get construction estimates, there's surveying that needs to be done. There is concerns of, and I won't speak for Ms. Shepherd, I'll speak for myself, is any messaging. So if the board were to desire to pursue that, surely, and Ms. Shepherd could speak to surveying, we want to ensure we're not telling the community that it would qualify or it would be approved. But it's, it's hard for the board to make a decision on, you know, without any construction estimates to widen the road and acquire right-of-way to do so. There's some alignment and different things. So I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Shepherd, the telefee funds could be used at least for the surveying portion if the board showed desire. So just a little feedback while we have Ms. Shepherd here today is the desire to at least explore, perform the surveying, which would be a direction to VDOT.
Is everybody good on going down the path on Turner? And they're at the bottom of our list right now, so it should be completed in 12 or 13 years. Wouldn't it be, put it in the, get the surveying done, put it in the queue and potentially by that time, maybe some other funds will become available to proceed if it is applicable?
So you have, you get about, about $38,000 a year in telefees. So that will continue, as far as we know, continue to come in. And then right now, your district grant paved, you get about, it goes up towards the end of the plan, but roughly $300,000 is what I'm seeing. And then towards the end of the plan, it goes up to like $370,000. So as long as that funding stream continues each year, that will be the funding stream to use, unless the board would like to pursue another option such as revenue sharing.
We don't.
Mr. Chairman, I think that would speak to any other roads. The only other roads I think that came up recently, like Chlor Road, widening of that. It's not a one-for-one, they would have to, they would have to evaluate roads to determine which type of program of funding would be needed. So I just heard no revenue share.
Yeah, are you on board on revenue share?
Yeah.
You want to, you want to use some of the money for, county money for revenues or for VDOT stuff?
Oh no, I just assume, I have no appetite.
So now, we're back to where we are. So no, revenue sharing is not looked upon favorably. We would rather use probably telefee funds, if applicable.
Yes, but again, you get $37,000 a year for that. And that covers, that covers a couple of different things. So that gets spread into call centers. So one call center is right-of-way, which is what we're going to tap into to do the survey. One call center is for traffic engineering related services, which is a separate piece. And then there's another one that I'm leaving out.
Is that the TAP? I think we had unspent TAP funds from last year?
Yeah, there's, there's just two other, two other call centers. They're not really, they're not really too specific.
Are we, are we, have we identified usages for the $37,000? And how much do you think surveying is going to cost?
I, I think when we last talked to our surveyors, we were around $10,000 to $12,000.
Looking good for us.
So, and just to also put it in perspective to, the section of Turner Drive that qualifies is .44 miles out of .67. So, and that .44 miles, we are estimating to cost.
That's a whole bunch.
Yeah, it was $360,000 roughly. So the additional .23, you know, in addition to just hard surfacing would also require the things that Mr. Wiggly just spoke of, which is the potential realignment, the right-of-way dedication, the drainage issues, the widening, so forth.
So, yep, please?
Mr. Wiggly, where are we on the right-of-way issue with the residents? I know that there, there was a holdup with that. Has there been any progress made?
So let me try to answer it. I'm, I'm going to also look to VDOT to help me through this. So getting the surveying, I think, would help kind of identify any additional properties that maybe we weren't tracking to get signatures. I do know, we've kind of identified Ms. Wilson as the, and we appreciate it when we have one point of contact. But it's been the contact for the residents on that road. In fairness, I think there was at least one resident that was, so we've, we've kind of moved on and say, would it, folks to the right of Turner Drive would give up more right-of-way? So there is a letter we received signed by certain residents. We have issued that over to VDOT. The question becomes, is it sufficient enough? Or would the survey work that they would begin to do identify some additional steps to discuss right-of-way? So I believe we're, you have that. I don't believe there's anything else needed to do the surveying, but there may be other documentation needed, once you kind of get into that discovery of cost of project. And these are the right-of-ways for not only widening the road, but the drainage and the dispersment of that drainage. Did I miss anything on that? Can you, anything you can add to that from Mr. Dure?
No, we don't need anything to do the survey, just willingness that you want us to use that funds for that purpose. And then once we do have that, we'll have very clear, should have very clear limits that we'll be requesting for the citizens to donate. And then that process would have to be, you know, go through that process, the legal documentation of the right-of-way dedication.
Would that be issued from VDOT to the residents? That would not be a county thing, right? At that point in time, if the board says, yep, we'd like that, move forward please, then VDOT would work with those property owners, such as you've done with R-Cut or any of them.
No, we would not. This would have to be handled through the county.
Is there at least, I'm sorry.
Or we have to get, Madison County has to obtain the right-of-ways and then convey them to VDOT. Is that what you're saying?
No, we would just ask you to handle the coordination of, of the documentation behind the donation of right-of-way to...
To VDOT.
Well, I guess it technically is to the county, but then, of course, we maintain it, but yes.
Who would draft those documents? That's where I would need understanding.
I think we could assist with some templates to help with that. And then of course, any costs associated, we could also use this cost.
I would just ask whatever templates, because I'm not the road engineer, but we would definitely go out and work with the community as we have.
You've got great neighbors over on Turner Drive in every way. And we should be, they've requested and want to work with the county and VDOT to proceed with the 2.7 mi, or .27 miles of left on the road to finish out the rural rustic project. We've got several years to get this thing all put together and funded. Surveying being the first step to go through, and then we can start figuring out what right-of-ways we need. Working with VDOT, I think Madison County does not want to own any more roads. We have one and it is going poorly. So we should, we should stay away from that. But I do think we can kind of act as conduit in between, and that's something that wouldn't be a problem at all. Back to the, my original, have we designated any of the $37,000 of telefee funds for any other project at this point where we're stealing away to move down the surveying path?
No.
Okay, y'all want to proceed with some surveying down there?
Yeah, it's only 10, what, 10, 12 grand or so?
Hopefully 10. Yeah, let's move on. And then we can start figuring out what else we need along that road. What other roads do we need to discuss? Chlor Road we talked about.
We talked about Parish, I think we took it off the table a while back, because that is even more challenging when it comes to WIF and so forth. I think to pick back up on the conversation of the six-year plan, and we can go back and look at the numbers. I think there was high 100, almost 200K of some monies left. And it was the board direction at that time. There's probably six to eight roads that VDOT would go back and look at. So maybe have some estimates when we get to next spring to use that. So you have some, they're different buckets, as Ms. Shepherd has outlined, but you have some monies still remaining to do other things. Very good point of information and thank you for providing. And I think we're near about 85 to 100 miles of remaining unpaved roads. To clarify that, they would have to go and research and review. So not all those would possibly pertain or qualify for rural rustic, as we just talked about someone there, like Parish Road in example. But it is a fair point to bring up the amount of unpaved roads and that's generally what your six-year plan tries to accomplish. And the rural rustic project stretched that dollar further than your normal paving operation like you would have on 29.
We have like six roads on the six, six or seven roads on the six-year plan. It takes forever to fund those. We're not going to get to the 85 to 100 miles. We can start knocking them off. The one that we, has been requested at this point is Chlor Road, looking into it. My recommendation is have them come as part of the six-year plan. They certainly are not going to go around any of the other roads that are pre-existing on the list. So that, what is it, April, May? Have the group that would like, and they've got a group, they've got a petition, have them come in and, or what's, Ms. Lillard come in and represent and try to get it on the six-year plan. Wouldn't that be the direction to go?
May I ask Ms. Shepherd a question, Mr. Chairman? Do, does VDOT know now or could you look to see? I understood what the board just requested, but do we know if that road, as it sits, we know about widening needs, what type of program or funding program would we be looking at? If it's telefee and, and, and other funds we talked about, I think we know where we're going. But if it's revenue share, I think we also know where we're going.
Yeah, and those would really be your only options.
But what would Chlor Road be? What funding program?
It depends on what you want to do. We did already review Chlor Road, it has a number of challenges. At this current state, it does not meet criteria for rural rustic. But if you were interested in doing something, something similar to Turner, it would require, I think it would require a lot more work, but that's another conversation. But essentially, it would be your unpaved roads allocation that would be put towards that. Unless you were interested in revenue sharing, which again, is a 50/50 match.
No, we're not interested. No, not interested. Having come at the six-year plan, we can go down the path. I mean, if citizens made a request, or a group of citizens have made a request, we need to go through the due diligence to try to figure out if there is an option or if it doesn't qualify and see what we can go, where we go from there. Other VDOT issues? Anybody else have any other VDOT issues? How's the patching going?
Good.
How's the patching going, Jim? I'm throwing you under the bus, I'm sorry. I've received complaints about some of the patching. Yeah, it's still there. Yeah, that's not good. All right.
Yeah, I've got one question. Ms. Shepherd, I saw you, at one point you said a, a speed study was not warranted. How would you know a speed study is not warranted unless you do a speed study and say, nobody's speeding?
There's a couple of different reasons why a speed study wouldn't be warranted. One is, we've done one recently in the past. Another one is conditions haven't changed at all. Trying to think, I think there's a couple of other things that we look at too, before we just expend resources for the speed study. And I could check those specific ones for this road if you'd like me to get back with you about that.
Yeah, please, get back to Jonathan.
Okay.
All right, I was just curious.
All right. Anything else? Yeah, 230, are we doing something to 230 going towards Orange?
Yeah, we're going to be, we're going to be paving it. So if there's concerns about the patching, it's going to get covered up with our paving schedule. So if it is, if there is feeling that it's rough or, you know, a little bit funky right now, it's going to get, that was just to help with the structure of the road prior to us coming in and doing the...
The ones that have been, this, this man apparently rides bikes. River, Ridgeview, Tryme and John Weaver, he has complaints about patches on. On 230 though, when are you paving that? Because we thought it was on like 2025.
Oh, but you're, you're talking, I just want to make sure, clarify, you're talking about Orange Road. Orange Road, so not Wolf Town?
The eastern side.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll have to double check. If we're patching it, it's this year.
All right.
Or, or in preparation for next year. There's possibility that it could be early next year.
Check on it.
Yeah, we can check on it. I know we rode that, Supervisor Jewett and I rode that with Mark and Ed. And we were told maybe as far as 2027, because they grade the road. And if you were to mill and patch the imperfections that are there, it would improve the grading therefore push off the repaving schedule.
You're, you're right. No, that, that...
So I just want to make sure we weren't confusing Wolf Town Hood Road with Orange Road. They're talking about Orange Road.
You are right. That is, what he just said is exactly right. I'm sorry, I got confused.
2027?
Could be that, but that's, they ride the roads and grade them. Rate them, I mean.
Yeah, condition, condition ratings. And that section to the east is in actually pretty decent condition. And so it's not at the top of our rankings right now.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, are you referring, I want to go to, I heard Ridgeview, John Weaver, Tryme. I think it goes as far as back in the Novum. I know that was on your paving schedule. And what I have learned, learned a lot, is the skin patching that occurs prior is kind of preppant for the roads. Do we know if those paving, I thought we had noticed that those Whitehurst or somebody was going to be doing it. So that's pre-paving activity. I haven't rode out there yet. I will do so sometime soon. But do you know if that paving has been completed or if that's just the skin patching? Because they're due for paving.
I don't know if that's complete yet. We get two-week look ahead and I'll have to look back and see if that's...
You live out that way, Mr. Smith, what's?
They have been or, oh, good, good, it's excellent. All right, anybody else have any other VDOT issues? Yeah, go ahead.
No, I'm just going to make a comment about the, the two-thirty east Orange Road. I mean, it's, there has been patching done to it, but if we're not going to pave it for the next three to four years, there needs to be some more patching, because we do have, there's a significant amount of rough surface area on that. And, uh, it's particularly dangerous to motorcycles. I know because I ride a motorcycle once in a while. But it's just, uh, I mean, and, and the engineer's explanation as to why they're reluctant to make those patches because they don't hold well, I don't, I don't think, I think we should try to make more of an effort to try to get that patched if we're going to be a while paving it. That wasn't me. Anyway, thank you for your consideration on that.
All right. We're just shocked you're a motorcycle rider, Jim. Um, all right. Uh, any other questions or comments from Ms. Shepherd?
And your one last thing, I believe, um, it has been confirmed that we were approved, CTV approved the, um, Smart Skill Project for Pratt's and Fairground Road.
That's correct.
Okay.
What's the next step on that roundabout?
The next step is just opening it up and starting preliminary engineering.
What's, I know, uh, what kind of time period are we looking on that?
Probably six years out.
There you go. That's, well, thank you. All right. Anybody else have anything to miss, Shepherd?
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. No old business, let's go to new business. Um, PSAP grant. Brian?
Okay, I'm going to talk the board report, and then I'm going to kind of move into some talking points that I had. Um, this grant has been about three years in the making. Um, the PSAP recognizes, recognizes funding program was requested by a few PSAPs through multiple surveys. Um, it's eligible to any PSAP in the state for a quad twenty-four. It's a one-time employee recognition or signing bonus program. What it, what it basically coming down to being is twenty-five hundred dollars per position. Um, it's available to, the criteria there, you see it's A through G, I believe. The two that pertain to Madison County are A and C. Uh, full-time nine-one-one dispatchers or authorized PSAP managers, supervisor, administrative employees who are actively working on nine-one-one center floors, uh, as part of primary duties or during emergency situations. Um, the talking points, I wanted to kind of let you know what this is. This is the same grant.
I don't know. What's PSAP stand for?
Public Safety Answer.
Yeah.
NECC, nine-one-one answering.
Thank you.
Um, several different levels other than the state pound seven, seven for state police. Uh, Park Service has one up there. It's, they use a red thug type of thing up there. Um, funding is made available through the Code of Virginia. It's annually. The funding is limited by program initiatives, which this year, this is one of the initiatives. Uh, funding received from the E-nine-one wireless fund and other sources. Uh, the PSAP Grant Committee reviews those, and those are, uh, my peers, uh, pointing through so on government bodies. And then the nine-one-one services board approves those grants each year. Uh, we get a grant each year for a PSAP education grant. It's called the PEP grant. We send somebody to train and they pay for it. We do it a couple of times a year on that. Uh, the deadline to apply for this is August the fifteenth. I've already submitted the application, but nothing needs to be done unless this board approves it. Uh, the applications will be reviewed on August the twenty-ninth, and then the board will vote on those applications on the fourteenth, and then notification will be sent out soon thereafter. Um, sh- should the board choose to adopt this, we would do this sometime between September fourteenth and June thirtieth of next year. Um, the benefit, um, our ECC has been understaffed, to say understaffed, not having full trained people for the last twenty-four months. And that's conservative as, if I went back, I'm sure it would be the last thirty-six months. It's getting very hard to find people and to keep people. And we're not by ourselves. Emergency Services, Noah talks about it. I'm just lucky enough to find, found this grant, and the PSAP committee wants to do this. Uh, but it's getting very, very difficult. We can do something to keep folks in the center, train folks in the center for money. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
You're, you're, there's, you know, there's no matching funds on this.
Correct.
You're asking for us to commit for thirty-five K total value, twenty-five hundred dollars of shot for fourteen employees.
This...
Yeah, please.
To be reimbursed.
Yeah, I know, I understand.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. I see this as an absolute no-brainer. If we can apply with no matching funds and help out some of our dispatchers and managers and everybody that works there, what, what is the negative on this?
I don't see one.
That's right. Um, probably should do a motion to approve this.
So I just want to, so Noah, I, because the sheriff's not here. I mean, does funding like this for EMS or the Sheriff's Department come around? No? You have not seen it?
In, in past, you, so all this is probably CARES money. I mean, they're finding ways to spend this money. This is a good way to spend the money. But whether it's past CARES Act money, when, when there was pandemic, you know, first starting on, there was monies made available to, to keep our key staff who didn't take a day off. We're appreciative. Um, ARPA, there's been times we've used in the past for like the deputy bonuses last year, you recall, or a year prior for Sheriff's Office. So occasionally, there are funding streams that come through, still dealing with CARES money. This is PSAP through VDM, I get that, but I'm sure there was a component of originated CARES Act. So I would encourage, to your point, Supervisor Yow, I would encourage if other departments see type of grants, uh, or types of grants available, definitely apply. Um, we're appreciative of this funding, because it's not the county saying, hey, we're going to do this, because we know what pitfall that puts you in with one department for the other. So we're thankful for this grant. If there are others, we would encourage department heads to seek those, so we can bring those to the board for their attention, uh, their attention to consider.
Other questions or comments on this? What would y'all like to do?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, we approve the PSAP, PSAP grant. Uh, given one-time payments of twenty-five hundred dollars to fourteen of our communication positions totaling thirty-five thousand bucks.
Motion's made, seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. Thank you, Brian. Um, all right. RRC, fiftieth anniversary resolution. Mr. Weekly, what do you have to say about this one?
We've got a special guest here tonight that, uh, I, I want to talk about. He likes being talked about. Uh, no, I'm just kidding. Um, I think I look more fifty years anniversary than, than Patrick or Nora's organization, but, um, I'm going to get to the resolution here. Um, Rapid Handic, Rapid Hand Regional Commission, um, I think many of you, um, on the board are well aware of many of the services they provide. Uh, currently, Patrick and his team, uh, Ms. Little are providing services for our comprehensive plan review. Um, they've helped us with, uh, uh, water supply and planning. Uh, a lot of things that rural counties would be challenges, uh, challenged with, with limited staff, limited funding. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you would like for me to read the resolution verbatim or, or yourself, but there is a resolution prepared. I want to thank Patrick. He provided a lot of language, and Kim and Patrick were, were engaged in, in kind of getting this to final format. Um, I do have a question, Patrick. When did Madison join? I know we weren't originally part of the charter member, but, uh, we are, we are now on board, and we're appreciative of that, but, uh...
Yeah, if you'll permit me, I've got a couple of, um, just notes for...
Please do, sir.
The commission first meeting was, uh, January sixteenth, nineteen seventy-three. Madison County joined as a member in July of nineteen seventy-four, so about eighteen months in. Probably smart one to make sure it was going to last or if it was after a meeting or two. Um, first two members appointed for Madison County were, uh, Mr. Alvin Lore and Mr. William Mitchell. Um, both served beginning in July nineteen seventy-four. Supervisor Jackson, Supervisor Hoffman, both have had terms. Supervisor Jackson, right now, uh, Mr. Weekly avoided it while he was elected official, but as county administrator, has served us very well, and we appreciate all three of you, all your service. And, you know, I do want to highlight, um, James Arrington, who served twelve years from, uh, Madison County on the commission. Um, his, his time sort of overlapped when I started. I started in two thousand and six. He was on, um, for, uh, the first four or five years after that, um, there. So, yeah, so nineteen seventy-four, so almost fifty years for Madison County, I'm a commission, but we're appreciative of the support from the, the board and just the work that you want to assist in.
And do you, can you please plug? I think Kim's been sending out an invitation RSVP, but I believe you do have a celebration coming up, correct?
We do, and that's on my notes to, to invite everyone October fourth. Um, it's a Wednesday, um, five to eight, we're going to have a fiftieth anniversary celebration. It's going to coincide with our annual meeting. Um, we'll have a, a speaker, um, present a couple of words, just have some, some, a good time inside Old House Figures, um, in Polk River County. Um, everyone is invited. I think the first invitation went out today. Um, but yeah, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those, um, at the annual meeting.
Anybody have any questions for Patrick? The only comment I'll make, and I disagree with you, Jonathan, uh, is, uh, we, everybody says that we know what RRC does, uh, and specifically Patrick and his staff. Um, I don't think that's correct. Um, every time we do anything, somehow you all are involved. Uh, and it just keeps kind of evolving, and different services are offered, and that, for, especially like thin staff like Madison is, I mean, that's tremendous value and brings a lot to the table, and, um, certainly helps us in every way, so we appreciate it a whole bunch. Um, and working with the town's got some issues. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, let me put my Skyline cap hat on for a moment and let you all know that, uh, well, I'm the Finance Director for Skyline Community Action at the south end of town, and, uh, Patrick and his staff and Triple RC, um, uh, provided us with a grant to, uh, to get six new apartments, affordable apartments in the town of Madison. So, I mean, that, that kind of stuff, that kind of goes, you know, under the radar, you know, in a lot of cases, so...
And it, and I will say to that, Supervisor Yow, I mean, not, not that we have to poke our chest out, but sometimes I sit in meetings, whether the economic meetings or regional meetings, and, you know, Madison's jockeying. Uh, but there, uh, it's nice to hear, uh, Madison is, is always being considered. They came through, I think they came through with some additional funding as well for some, uh, I think some washer and dryers, some different things to upgrade that. So, uh, definitely, definitely appreciative. Uh, Patrick, I think we were on a call, uh, together this morning, whether it's, you know, with, uh, Central Virginia or Go Virginia. Uh, Patrick is, is representing the region well. Um, so it, it's Madison which we're appreciative of, but as, as well as the region. So to you and your team, thank you for representing the region as well as you do Madison.
Thank you, and, and to Mr. Jackson's point, that's, that's what we're here for, is, is if something comes up that a locality doesn't know how to address or wants to get some information, that's one of the reasons for you.
So, Mr. Chairman, you have, unless there's any questions or comments, you have a resolution prepared as Resolution Number twenty-two-three-dash-ten for your consideration for approval.
What would y'all like to do?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution twenty-two-three-dash-ten, commending the Rapid Handic Rapid Hand Regional Commission on its fiftieth anniversary.
Second. Motion's made, seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. Thank you very much, Patrick. All right. Um, Balltop Brewing Company Firework Permit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Balltop Brewery, as you know, they had a, uh, Fourth of July celebration. Um, they would like to have another fireworks display on September the second, so they have submitted, um, the proper paperwork. I believe an event permit application did come in. Is that correct? Are we tracking that?
Yep.
All right. I will say, the event permit application, it would touch the administrative function, um, because of the applicant, uh, specified an estimated, uh, approximately five hundred participants. So you may recall, we have a category one, category two. Doesn't mean you shouldn't be aware, your authoritative is the, the fireworks permit. Um, so they have submitted, uh, to my knowledge, everything satisfactory, um, for that effect, uh, insurance. They've provided a map. Um, I know our, uh, Assistant Chief Helm, as well as his emergency management hat, has reviewed that, and he is here as well. Should you have any questions or concerns or feedback?
Okay. All right. Does anybody have questions on this?
So Gavin, y'all don't do a standby for an event, an event like that, do you?
Not necessarily, nor has one been requested at this point.
They tend to look at the, the size. I mean, definitely county functions, like the fair, it makes sense. It's good visibility, plus they're there, God forbid if something happens. Um, a lot of your larger events, uh, you know, concerning events like the hair scramble and all, which makes sense. But unless there's a specific request or, or to that matter, um, usually it's a stand, standby. Um, a lot of times, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it could be, if you are there, it may still be a standby where you say, hey, if we've dropped that second or third tone, we're going, and then you would come back. So, uh, standby can be one of the other, uh, those definitions.
Balltop did a good job on the one that they did, what, uh, July first? Um, should be establishing some track record. They've obviously got all the credentials, it should be a pretty easy do. Y'all want to?
Mr. Chairman, I move to reapprove Balltop Brewing Company's firework permit.
I'll second. Uh, motion's made, seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign.
Mr. Turner? We've gotten a FAPT applicant.
Let me get my presentation back. I zoomed in too far. So we do have a, one, so it's a simple, simple report. Um, so the Community Policy Management Team, CPMT, is one of the teams you voted on recently to, um, do another term. Um, they voted, um, on seven-eleven for an appointment of Sarah Dillon to serve a two-year term on the FAPT, uh, which is the Family Assessment Planning Team. Um, she is going to fill the role for the private provider position, um, which is one of the, the two-year rotation terms. The other one, um, I can't think of what their position is considered. Um, but she is considered a private provider position. They voted for it, um, so you all, um, are being recommended to approve their vote.
What would y'all like to do?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Sarah Dillon for the FAPT.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. There you go. Um, discussion, we don't have anything. Information and correspondence, um, engineer professional service agreement renewal. Mr. Weekly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may recall, last year, um, the county, uh, sent out requests for proposals for professionals, uh, in, professional engineering service agreements. Uh, we went through that process, selection committee brought a recommendation to board, you ultimately approved that. Um, the way those agreements were structured, and I'm going to speak to the term, um, there was an initial twelve-month term, and then the county has the option to exercise for additional twelve-month terms. Um, so you've already approved it. I think it would be prudent to inform the board. We're coming up on our first year of that initial twelve months. Um, WW Associates comes up, um, this month, and then beginning of September is when the first twelve-month cycle is up for Hurt and Profit. Um, my plan of direction, uh, one, I think they have been satisfactory. Um, we are actively engaged with both firms. WW Associate is handling the, uh, design and bid work for the Hoover Ridge Outdoor Recreation Center, which was approved in the board's capital plan. Um, and that actually scope of work and proposal was recently approved by the board. Hurt and Profit, we have engaged for the renovation of the former Rescue Squad building. Um, and you have, actually, you have approved, and we are active with those, uh, design work as well. Uh, so staff recommendation would be to move forward with that. Um, had, uh, legal look at it, I believe, uh, I'm with an authority to, um, give written consent to re-up for another twelve months, but I put this as information to let you know what my plan is. If you are not in agreement with that, um, then please let me know, and we would take another course. But, um, we are actively engaged with either firm, as mentioned, for those prospective projects.
Do we have questions, comments on this? I think it's, what, give you the admin approval, move on with it?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Let's go to the upcoming public hearing, sign ordinance and rezoning fees.
Um, I'll kick this over to Hannah, and I, I will say, I'll speak to the rezoning if, if you can real quick, because there's something I need to clarify, and then Hannah can pick up from there. Uh, on the rezoning fee, uh, you may recall, we, we kind of had this... On the rezoning fee, you may call, we, we kind of had this recent case to consider and really examine our zoning fees. Right now, if you wish to rezone, your rezoning application is roughly two thousand dollars. Zoning fees are viewed as administrative fees. So you may recall during budget time, all those fees, whether they're dog license, building inspection, zoning, that are part of that administrative fee and there's a resolution that's been approved for that. Upon this recent consideration of one particular zoning case that kind of got us to reevaluate that, staff had brought to you and really some of you as board members had said, hey, that, that fee's kind of steep. Can we look to maybe align that with our current special use permit fees, which is five hundred dollars? Staff looked at that. Normally staff would say, yes, the five hundred dollar fee, it would bring some cohesiveness as well as far as fee schedules. But upon looking at additional services beyond advertising, so we're not looking to be a for-profit here. That's not our mission. We're basically, do we cover our advertising and other things? So there is an additional service that we have. Hurt and Profit, before this professional service agreement, had been on contract for a while for our G I S services. So if there's a map change, Hurt and Profit covers that for us, so there is a fee. So that's why staff is recommending instead of five hundred dollars for rezoning fee to be considered for an amendment to that fee, we recommend six hundred dollars. I know it's a hundred dollars more, but at least I'm explaining what we are looking to cover. This is not looking to cover my time or Liggins' time. You all, the county pays us. Whether we're working on rezoning or, or plan review or what have you, this is to cover those outside fees. So six hundred dollars is staff recommendation and that's what will be advertised for a public hearing to be considered on August the twenty-second.
That is a sight better than two thousand dollars.
Yep.
And if we can get zoning to work the way zoning should work, it's a positive for everybody. Six hundred bucks, everybody fine?
Yep.
Yeah.
Please.
I, I just would like the public to know why we're, we're doing this. And y'all correct me if I'm wrong, so the planning commission and this board gets a lot of special use permits to do, do things in, in agriculture zones mainly. And instead of, instead of issuing a special use permit, why don't we, why don't we rezone it properly and, and, and be done with it? Except that the fee to rezone is two grand and the fee to special use permit was five hundred. So people come in and go, shoot, I'll just spend five hundred, take my chances with the planning commission and the board and go from there. So I think, you know, this, I think this is the way to go.
And it's not.
Get our zoning right.
It is us approving the request. It is not us going down the path of rezoning, rezoning private property. This just makes it more applicable. We know we have a case coming up to the planning commission out on twenty-nine that they want to be a, they want to be a business. That's a good example of where this works really, really well.
Yeah. Yeah, if you're, if you've been A one, but you want to be a business and you're on the route out twenty-nine corridor, your business is not agricultural or selling an agricultural product, that's kind of how this came about to, to your point. And it would be changing the fee. They still would have to apply. The commission would hear it and then the request would come to the board. So it is changing the fee structure, which thank you for considering that. I believe that is advertised for August twenty-second for a public hearing, I believe. Mr. Wright? Anything that I missed on zoning fees?
Only that there would still be, what's unchanged is if it's over ten acres, there's still a fee for that based on, and that's calculated based on size of that.
What's the going rate per acre over ten?
It's, I believe, a hundred dollars over that. And where you get into that, I know you were looking at solar recently. You could get into a larger, complex review of, say, a mixed development. Somebody brings you residential and commercial. There's a lot more review and, and technical that would be involved in that, probably go into multiple meetings, multi-advertising. So staff does not recommend a change to that. You don't get many of those. But your normal run-of-the-mill, like the case study that we've used to get to this point, certainly would fall into that six hundred. So you'd have a very small group or applicants that would hit there, but naturally they would be bigger things, being development, that would require that extra attention.
All right. We're proceeding with this. Anybody else have any comments on this? Seems like a really good thing. All right. Now the sign ordinance, Hannah.
Sign ordinance, I can go into as much detail or as little as you'd like, but it's being advertised, trying to change and add, essentially adding a new provision to the sign, the overall big sign ordinance about what's permitted. This permit allows signs potentially for a seventy-two hour period. It being content neutral in terms of not regulating what's in these signs and that's in order to comply with First Amendment law.
That one queued up for the twenty-second as well?
It is.
Anybody have questions or comments on the sign ordinance?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right.
Jim? You?
It, it, it should be the same as last person that we, we've done before.
Sure.
All right.
But if there's changes to it, I'll let me know if there's suggestions.
Anything else, Hannah? Thank you. All right. Anything else?
I think just the M O A, we're still working on that. So I know the intent was initially go to a public hearing, but that has to be ready to go. So that's two counties working on that same time. I will say that, that counsel from both parties is actually working on that, got a good handle on it. But when that's ready for advertisement, we'll bring that back for the board so you can set that date.
I talked to Mark Johnson today, the chairman of the Orange County Board. They're being briefed about it tonight. Their direction is to consistent with what we proposed, the ten over ten. Should be able to have something to aspire next meeting and then maybe we will proceed and go to a public hearing. The other one, it's weird. I don't get a whole lot of phone calls from adjacent counties. Nelson County with the line of duty resolution we did, they're super appreciative of it. Their chairman wanted to convey the message, so that's that. Anything else? Public comment? Public comment? Has anybody watched us at all?
They watch you on YouTube, so you can't see them on the channel. I've learned that.
All right. No public comment. We don't have a closed session. What would y'all like to do?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
This conference is no longer being recorded.